And so those were things that were brought up in the last conversation that seemed to be missing from your board that goes along with your remarks about just focusing in on what's going to benefit those immediate neighbors.
No, we mentioned it, so that's, that's why I had it signed up there.
Would you like to?
Thanks for the reminder.
Do you want it up there?
Yeah.
Sure.
I don't, I don't think we should. I just agree.
I think it's a really good idea, actually. Because it would draw the community out. And we just, we need to be smart on how you, where you place it. How it's situated. You're really, you've got a lot of crowding going on right now, so. I think it's a great idea.
Well, you know, sculpture art is one form of art, but performance art is another. And performance art is what community folks do, community groups do that. We have gymnastics groups, we have martial arts groups, we have music groups. We have all those things and, and really there is no, there's no place in North Hills for that currently. There's a small little pad at Freedom Park. But it's not real. It's, it's underdeveloped for that purpose.
You know, one of the things I just want to point out is that while not all these things will end up in this location, it's really helping me because we're actually kind of doing a mini master planning. Because we're talking about all the unmet needs and all the wants and the things that we'd like to have. And as you're talking, my mind is racing. Okay, what good location would, could this, could we put a dog park? Could we put a performance center? Could we put, you know, a, a, a permanent wall and a, a little performance area? So, trust me, what doesn't end up in this particular park project, I can see myself going back to the board rather soon and start talking about, by the way, we do need to update our park master plan. It is now ten or twelve years old. And so we need to update that and a lot of these elements, a lot of these things you're talking about can start being planned and incorporated in our current park system and as our park system continues to grow.
The amphitheater area, well amphitheater floor, but just the projection, like I'm downtown Sacramento often. I see them have like big screen and there's tons of people that come to those movie, movies that they project. But downtown, they only have backyards and then they have these condos that they live in. They can only have that at home to have the big movie people enjoy the movies outside. But in the suburbs here, like you could, I could have a projector in my backyard and a screen and everything right in the whole family. I think we have the possibility and people would really come off of that. My opinion.
That's, those are things, things that build community. You hope.
Yeah, but I just, yeah, but I would also like to propose maybe a skate park.
That was brought up in the last one too, but there, there was a significant opposition for a skate park at that site. I'm sure Mark here could cite those two reasons.
I think just visually, this is a lot better than last time with this with the, like the flat acreage we were doing with the various and we have a list of things and like someone brought, I forgot who it was who brought up. If we were to do something like a dog park, we would be on the southern side. If we actually start to see visually, where would we want this, where would we want that, it'd be a little bit easier to kind of triage this.
Well, that's, that's your, that's gonna be your job. That's what you have for our next exercise. But I gotta get to a point where everybody's sort of agrees on what sort of features. We have to be sort of realistic about the imprint, how, the, the footprint. It's only seven acres. It is segmented, so that makes it a real challenge. You know, if you put a dog park in, that southern side is probably going to be dominated by a dog park.
Yeah, I was thinking like, you're saying minimum an acre, could that be yours to play by six point eight of an acre on the smart side where it's not a perfect square, but given like an easement to the, that neighboring, you know, those neighboring houses. I didn't understand that. I mean, just like giving space here, like I'm not really sure how much space that is, but.
Yeah.
So far we've done a lot.
Well, it would have to.
Doesn't have to, but if, if you really want it to be a very passive park, the parking may not be necessarily required.
But that's, that's one reason when like if you can see that, it's involved and it's a more active park and then it's where the gazebo's and the park area.
Well, maybe that's where the folks want more of an active park, interactive, more they want more of a passive park, trails.
That would be something to just start with, say parking, because that will change the dynamic of the park, so.
It would.
I think the, this area of consensus.
Yes.
There's a lot of good ideas.
Diplomatically like that.
But I think what, my own, my own opinion for what it's for, I think that Sierra Creek natural urban interface is probably the, the idea that kind of leaps out at me with the hiking trails and keeping it simple. I don't know about how much, there's a lot of native plant growth there already and there's wildlife living in there. Deaves and pheasants and, you know, I'd like to see them stay there.
I think that's the one thing, wildlife every year.
A, a nice little simple hiking trail with some fences and maybe some signs and sculpture to go along with it, accent it. I think that would make a real nice place to go, make it a nice space.
Low impact. Okay.
That's what I was thinking too, I'm more aligned with that.
And you can still play the dog there, right? You can still walk your dog around the park there. Nothing wrong with that. Maybe if you have to keep him on a leash, but other than that, it'd be an enjoyable place for your dog to walk around.
You gotta hand it in the back.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to remind everybody that forty years ago, this was a park that, when I bought my house in subdivision, that was going to be a park for our subdivision, so, and that includes children, so I just want you guys to keep, because they have no place right now to play. They have to climb over the, the school fences to play at the school.
Well, you know, what about a pad? I can't see where they couldn't play in a hiking bar.
Well, I, I was kicking a soccer ball like three months ago at the school, so I was just kicking against the wall, just practicing. And then some teachers walked by and they say, "What are you doing here?" Like, "Just playing, you know, practicing, kicking the ball." I'm like, "You can't be here." And it's true, I can't.
That during school hours?
Yeah, it was after school.
Now, this is after school hours.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't, I'm not gonna go to that school hours, of course. But I mean, yeah, I could drive to a park. I used to go workshop up by the Villar Park, uh, too far. I mean, that's fine, but, but today there's a lot of kids running around in the neighborhood. This is a park, I believe, it's for them.
So, uh, we have a difference of opinions probably, right? Some, some folks want to see it more, more active.
What's that?
Some folks want to see more active features, playgrounds, spray park, splash pads.
Well, there's, there's a lot of good ideas up there, like, like I said, but it's, we're talking seven point four acres. It's not like it's twenty-five or thirty or anything like that. You're gonna have to hear the list down a little bit and frame it.
I, I would, I would only say this, is it, it is, it's a very visual piece. And it, you can really frame it such a way where you can define the neighborhood and define North Hills. If you put in a passive park, that's terrific, but you're not really making a state. Because it's not gonna look very much different than if that's right.
Is that considered passive?
Passive is just, yeah, passive is just trails, a low impact. Okay, so just by listing everyone, we do this and here possibly a playground, splash pad. And then this side do the passive trail nature to keep it natural.
Pretty cool to that.
Well, everybody, why don't everybody go ahead and tell us what they want to see? Yeah, no, I, I was just kind of hearing what. Right, and I would only say that if there's gonna be parking, that you want playground features right next to it. Well, that's what I'm saying, if we're gonna use the school parking. Oh, I see. To go right into there.
That allows the children from the neighborhood easy access to.
That, that's kind of what I was. Well, daytime. Is there any objections that community will argue about? Which I do too.
Walk-in trail in the community garden, is there anybody who chimes that? That'd be an easy way to pair that up.
That would get hard to find, you know, easy target.
Is it safe? Is there any objections to a community garden and then the California native drought tolerant plant installs walking trails, creekside interpretive perimeter trail? The access, that new access point adjacent to the school? Art, gazebo's, breaking problems? Everybody likes that, right?
Oh, yeah, all, there's, there's consensus on all the, on the TNE objections.
It wouldn't have to be like a half a dozen or anything, it could be like two. There's pretty, to use, uh, Freedom Park as a reference points, again, like two of those would be sufficient, I think, for a seven acre park.
Two what? I'm sorry.
Oh, gazebo's with the, with multiple tables under it.
So, so in terms of some of these more active features like playground, spray park, you, you folks know your community better than I do. There seems to be a pretty dense population within that half mile radius. I would imagine there's high youth population. I don't, I don't know offhand.
There's two elementary schools within reasonable walking distance, one being right there and then the elementary school also pretty close.
Like you said, they have apartments with all the kids. Now, there's no, the only place that they can get wet or go is, is, um, town up high.
Uh, for if you, the amphitheater, again, I think that's a great feature. As an alternative, I mean, if you're looking to pull, pull people out, a similar feature, there, there are mobile amphitheaters and screen projection systems that, that can be installed too. You can't, they can't be paid for through the grant, unfortunately, but that's just food for the mouth.
Oh, Doug, did, did you say that the park's gonna close at sunset?
Uh, we open at, close at sunset, open at sunrise.
Yep.
Well, that would certainly, certainly better, that's true.
Yeah, after hour, but.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, what about lighting? Folks want to see lighting? It's always a challenge with the neighborhood.
Is the park open after dark? Just for security?
Generally, yeah.
I know lighting is good for deterrent for homeless populations.
It's just hard to light that whole park, right?
The whole thing.
You're gonna say the active part of it is concrete, but the trails and stuff.
Right.
How about, how about, we're gonna probably detail the skate park, crazy gesture, but.
We're not giving up on the skate park, we're mad at the viewpoint.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I, I mean, how do I have younger, you know, teenage kids? But, you know, I deal a lot with the high school kids, you know, thirteen, fifteen year olds. They're not gonna be on splash pad or on the playground. So, I mean, I don't know if you're familiar, but what, what is it that they do? Is there something that they do?
The thirteen, fifteen?
You know, they have thirteen, seventeen year olds, you know, the teenagers.
Basketball, skate parks.
Is there something we could, I mean, I feel like something we can do for those kids? Cause, you know, you still got little Johnny, but you still got, you know.
Bigger Johnny.
Yeah, bigger Johnny. And, and I think something.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Along the way.
Well, they do football too and soccer if there's field area.
It's just, yeah. I mean, organized sports and athletics, it just, you just can't situate it on this thing, which unfortunately is not part of it.
This will do also just to walk around and park with some friends, nice too, but walking around, I do that in the suburb, there'd be like I did it before and now I've had some works and then I'll walk around, I don't meet anyone, no one's gonna stop and talk to you. But I mean, if this is gonna become a park where you just walk around as well, I'm not gonna meet anyone. If you want to get the community to actually talk, you see the parents are there with the kid and there's another parent. And she might just be there alone, maybe just start talking like, oh, blah blah.
Well, back to the dog parks, I mean, they, they are, they're a socialization hub, as are oftentimes playgrounds and splash pads.
Did we have benches here?
No, but oftentimes those are just implied, you know, designed for just.
I was kind of thinking that's implied.
Okay, guess we're at that point. What about parking? I mean, there, I don't know how viable the notion is of creating that new access though near, near the park and accessing that parking lot. I don't know if you can bank on it necessarily. Uh, so should there be onsite parking? If there is onsite parking, that, that's gonna consume a, a, a large portion of the active or the available park space, so.
Well, one of the things about the parking too is we have to go through the county and they have to sign off on having an entrance and an exit onto what, and there's no guarantee that they would approve that. Uh, so while we may want parking, uh, that's not a guarantee until we go further along and try to see if that's something that will correctly set and work with the project or so.
Yeah. There's a big, and parking is a, is a pretty big expense as well.
Well, if the purpose of this park is for this immediate neighborhood, then you really don't need to have a parking lot. As long as you have good access points all around.
Right, right, and technically, I think, given the size of the acreage, it's, it's, it's defined as a, as a community park or a neighborhood park? I think it's seven acres?
It's probably not big enough to be a community park, it's probably right on the edge of a large neighborhood park.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, it's good discussion, you know, last time we all assumed that parking was a good thought and we're kind of moving in a different direction. Maybe we don't need the parking necessarily, but what about the bathrooms?
The bathrooms, the shade structure, the barbecue, the tables, all that stuff I think you need to keep. Otherwise, why would people use the park?
I definitely think there needs to be bathrooms. I know, um, one reason why I'm very discouraged to go to some of the, some of our parks is when they don't have a restroom, but I have little kids. And then I was just out at Freedom Park, was it this past weekend, last weekend, one of the weekends? And because the, the bathrooms were shut down, I saw tons of kids using the restroom right outside. Tons of kids, so I think that.
Yeah.
Was that last week?
We have two sets of restrooms there, we have third ones and the porta potties, they're open all the time.
Oh, you're right, there were porta potties there, but they were using them outside, the restrooms outside. You were right, they were there, a ton of kids and their parents were allowing it.
A lot of the, a lot of the determination on the, on the restrooms, and same thing with parking, is the type of recreation of, uh, elements that you're gonna plan on that site, because if you're gonna do things that encourage families to bring their kids, there's got to be something for them, because there's no place where they're gonna, where they're gonna go, you know where they're gonna go. Those trees are gonna go wash quite a bit of them in the south end of the park. But I think the parking is something we, you know, if we, the problem with parking is it takes up such a big footprint of the park. Now, we are going to have to have some sort of, uh, vehicular access into the park because we have to maintain it. We don't want to get in a, a position of jumping curbs, probably like we do when we mow it now. Uh, and, and again, if you're gonna have a restroom out there, you're gonna have some hardscape area, I don't, it might be limited. If you don't have public parking, it might be limited just for district parking while they're out there servicing the park. Uh, but, you know, we have a creek that kind of goes right through the middle of the park and that kind of gets packed, or we're in the line of the uses.
Oh, it's, it's actually a nice aesthetic design feature and a natural design feature. And I think, you know, incorporating that more into the land state is probably a solid idea.
Yeah, like How Park, theirs is really nice.
Yeah, so going back to that notion of, you know, what's gonna be that, what's gonna be the wow factor associated with the park? And it might just be, it might just be that creek, if it's, you know, right now it's, it needs a little bit of love. For sure.
I have a, I have no stake in this, but I have a stupid idea. You probably know the acreage that each item approximately might take up.
Roughly.
Why don't you guys figure out what you want and the acreage that'll take up and then you can cut things out as it's too big or too big.
That's, that's a great idea. Well, and I, I suppose I would know that, I, you know, it depends on how large the community garden might be and. But I would, if you guys want to, if you want to go through the exercise of situating, go ahead and, you know, where you're not getting granted on your artwork yet, next meeting.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I just figured you probably are more familiar with acreage than somebody.
Okay, wait, wait, wait.
No, no, actually.
Yeah.